That will be led by Lorelei and Ellie Reminger.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, girls. Next up, we have approval. We need a motion to approve the open session agenda for September 18th, 2025 as presented.
Motion. Second.
All right, we have a motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, moving into recognitions.
Yes.
Before we go into recognition, because that's an important point, I'd like to ask, given the news we've had over the last month with all the killings from kids to adults to police officers, do we all just take a moment, reflect, have a moment of silence for all the people that have been killed by people that have significant issues in their life? Thank everybody for being quiet for a few moments to just contemplate. Thank you.
Okay, six WSD students took home medals at the Family Career and Community Leaders of America, FCCLA National Competition this summer. Congratulations to North Point High's third-place finishers Kylie and Haley, and Liberty's second-place finishers Maddie, London, Violet, and Zoe. Great job. You can come on up. Okay, up next, WSD students earned top 10 finishes on the HOSA Future Health Professionals International Leadership Conference this summer. Congratulations to Liberty's Audrey, Leah, Lorelei, Pernod, and Isabella, Timberlands Emma and Jessica, and Frontier Middles Peyton, AJ, Jessalyn, Jackson, Avaya, and Eli. Congratulations. Okay, thanks to the quick thinking efforts of Liberty student Mackenzie and WSD bus driver Kevin, a student is safe today. Upon noticing a student was choking while on the bus, Mackenzie immediately jumped into action and began the Heimlich maneuver. She notified the bus driver Kevin, who promptly stepped in, called 911, and signaled for assistance from a bystander. Way to go. Okay. Thanks to the quick actions of staff members at Crossroads Elementary, a student is safe today. When a student began choking on a grape, instructional assistants Katie, Adrienne, and Christie stepped in to help, and CRE teacher Lindsay then took over and was able to dislodge the blockage while others sought additional help. Thank you for the quick response. All right, we will be moving on to the public comment portion of our meeting. I don't know, usually there's an exodus of people after this, so I'll give a moment.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to allow all speakers. There's three additional.
Second.
So Director Olson has made motion to allow for 13 speakers. Any discussion?
Just a question comment. I know back when we were reviewing this back in the spring, and again, I want to hear from all the constituents, but I thought we talked about how we wanted to set the precedent of 10 speakers, keep the time limit going. Again, if they're not able to speak, it's known that this is the top 10, and they can share their comments with us via email or other avenues as well. So I was just trying to remember if that's what we had talked about, so.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, so we have a motion and a second for allowing 13 speakers. Can you roll call, please, Joni?
Secretary Beazinfall?
Nay.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Wei? Director Lewis?
Aye.
President Scott?
Nay.
Vice President Walsh?
Nay.
Director Hanky?
Aye.
Motion fails.
Thank you, Joni. And yes, I do want to reiterate what Director Beazinfall had stated, that we would like, you know, to hear from any constituents who would like to share their comments via email. You are more than welcome to and are encouraged to. So first up, we have Speaker Rebecca Messick.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Messick. I am a district teacher, resident, and parent. I'm also the president of the Wentzville NEA. And in lieu of a board member taking a spot that is reserved for community input, I yield the remainder of my time to Donald Looney.
I'm sorry, Rebecca, that is not allowable in our policy as it currently states. I'm sorry.
All right, in that case, I'm sure that many of you know that we are finding ourselves in the midst of a fairly serious teacher shortage. The state is trying to help us by allowing our retired teachers to work while drawing their pension, which thank you to all of those teachers who have returned to Wentzville to try to help out. But we still find ourselves with very few candidates for a lot of job openings, and substitute teachers are also very hard to come by. I bring all of this up because it is imperative that our district become intentional and aggressive about teacher retention. We cannot afford to lose any of the quality educators that we have here. Across the country, teachers are leaving the profession altogether because of the unrealistic workload and the stress of the working environment. Here in Wentzville, great teachers are leaving to go to other districts. How can we change that? There are so many actions, big and small, that can convince our teachers to stay. Take the time to tell them how much that you appreciate them with a note or a gesture. Take their needs into consideration when creating programs and policies. Give them a way to voice their concerns in a constructive manner and let them feel heard. Create a way for them to have more collaboration time in order to plan their quality instruction. When discussing student data, whether at the building level or here in this boardroom, find what teachers are doing right and praise them for it. Be careful not to make them feel that they are to blame for low test scores. Talk to them and ask them what they need or how you can help. Offer to buy some supplies for their building or their classroom. Speak highly and kindly of the educators in your life and those in our district. Give them the work-life balance that allows them to have a life outside of their school. Our educators show up every day and give their all because they care about students and their community. And for anyone listening, I urge you to consider how you might brighten a teacher's day tomorrow. Give them a reason to want to stay here in the WSD.
Thank you. Next speaker is Katie Rosner.
Hi, I'm Katie Rosner, and I am a teacher here in the district. Wentzville teachers are some of the best I've ever been around, and I've worked in three districts over my, what feels like very long teaching career. They consistently demonstrate professionalism while in the classroom, spend their own time outside of their contracts to provide opportunities and learning experiences, and show up every day despite hardships in their own lives or within their jobs. I'm lucky to be able to associate with this tremendous group of over 1,000 humans in this district. Some highlights from the land of the free and the home of the brave, Liberty. Even with zero training on ELL students, teachers have bent over backwards to help them understand content and make them feel comfortable in the building. A math teacher was recently observed taking a group of students to a different room and using Google Translate on her iPad to break down all the steps of the math lesson. With each of the students going above and beyond every day, sorry, with each, the students were able to go above and beyond what their normal daily lessons would look like. It's been a really incredible thing to witness. This is only the second year that ELL students are attending their home schools and not in one school in a designated program. It's been a huge adjustment, not only for the students, but for the teachers at Liberty as well. Teachers are using their lunchtime to hold extended club meetings so that students are unable to stay after school or come to school early can have access to the same activities as others. Making this equitable for all is sometimes a strain on the teachers, but has helped build community that we are proud of at Liberty. Many teachers are doing really fun labs, projects, and other activities to allow students to have fun while learning. Many of my freshman homeroom students are excited to tell me about the things they're doing in class and are excited about the classes in which teachers put in extra time and effort to create these engaging projects and activities. Setting up activities often requires teachers to come early or stay later than contract time. But stop by any morning or afternoon, and you'll be sure to see teachers giving this time for students. Teachers are pivoting and working hard to not lose instructional time when technology issues arise, and boy, do they arise. The custodial staff at Liberty got the building looking fantastic to start the year. There's just something about that fresh shiny waxed floor. It really starts the year off. But coming to work in a clean building definitely helps add to morale. Not one, but two teachers in our foreign language department forfeited their planned period this year so that more students can take foreign language classes. Again, sacrificing their personal time to benefit students. In one freshman class, a teacher reported that the students this year seemed to be really focused and working hard. And out of 80 students taking the Unit 1 Common Assessment, only one student scored below a C, most of them scoring As and Bs. Huge accomplishment, and many kudos to that teacher for getting their students prepared. Another teacher heard the request of several students wanting to add more advanced classes at LHS and started teaching and built a curriculum for AP Research Class. So many requests that they have a waitlist for next year. This is just one example of the many great things that teachers are doing. So to piggyback off of Becca, let's try to keep those great teachers in the WSD.
Thank you. Next up is Julia Lutkinhaus.
Good evening, President Scott, members of the board and administration. I know that I've been here countless times over the last 25 years, but this time I want to actually say thank you for the smooth way this school year has started, in particular in my building, in my experience. And I hope that this is felt across the district, but I'm not sure. Sometimes in our execution of our day-to-day tasks, we forget how far we've actually come. We are a far cry from the days when we were so disorganized as a district that we didn't even have anyone qualified to take over when our superintendent was fired. Long time ago, but we were there. There were no procedures or processes in place to make sure things ran smoothly. It was a disaster. Then we started our unprecedented growth, and though every effort was made to ensure that the processes made sense and were implemented with fidelity, it was difficult, to say the least. Then there was COVID, which turned our world upside down, and not to mention the difficult years we've had since then as we've tried to figure out what education here in Wentzville looks like. It's very clear to me in my situation that there has been some sort of change in the administrative focus. Because I see it in our mission, in our goals, in our data, and it's trickled down to the building administration that I'm working with. This fall, it feels like there's finally a plan where we know where we're going and how we want to get there. Our building administrators have been amazing in helping teams implement our PLCs, gather information that will help us determine exactly what we want our students to know and how we're going to ensure they're learning those things. Their constant presence throughout our building, as well as their willingness to dive in whenever and wherever is needed, has been a blessing and has fostered a sense of teamwork, among the eighth grade at least, where it has been lacking in the past. So in a time where it may seem that our critics are on every side, please know, Mr. Bishop, we see you and we thank you.
All right, next speaker is Tricia Mahoney.
Good evening. My name is Tricia Mahoney, and I am a proud public school teacher and a resident of the Wentzville School District for the past 23 years. I have three children, two graduates, one from Holt to North Point, and a current student at North Point. I also work, I entered my 20th year of teaching at Pierce Hall this year in the alternative program. I wanted to discuss with you tonight what student success means to me. As a parent, I have been exceptionally lucky, and my children have experienced tremendous success and many wonderful teachers in experiencing clubs, programs, and athletics here in the WSD. If I had to guess, I've taught probably 1,500 at-risk students in my 20 years here in Wentzville. While I've learned many things from my time here in the district, I have learned that student success has countless definitions, and student success is not linear. Student success can be measured in untold ways. But most importantly, student success is something that should always be celebrated. My fellow teachers at Pierce Hall are reporting the following student successes this five weeks into the school year. We have a Pierce Hall Pals program at Heritage Elementary, and each week, students from our MIP, Middle School Intervention Program, and Anna Branch connect with Heritage students to build relationships by practicing regulation and social skills. The joy was evident with hugs and smiles when those students reunited this year, the program started last year. Our Middle School Intervention Program, we had five graduates last year. They have successfully transferred, transitioned into our bridge program, which is new this year, where they spend half of their day at Pierce and the other half at their home high schools. And they already have students who are participating in clubs and are on a football team. Current students in the Middle School Intervention Program are making huge gains with their academic and emotional goals. Our Missouri Options Program at Pierce Hall has already had their first graduate as of today. It was a student, a young man, who was at risk of dropping out and struggled with school for the past three years, and now he will collect his diploma in May. In our Anna Branch Program, those students have seen success in their focus and academics grow year after year, and they are more engaged. They have increased coping skills, and our returning students have come back, and they have transitional opportunities that this year they get to go to their home schools for part of their day. As I close, I would like to say that student successes occur every day, in every classroom, on our athletic fields, on our school buses, in our theaters, and in our nurses' clinics. These successes happen in collaboration with parents, with family members, community partners, and hard-working teachers and staff in this district. These successes happen regardless of the chaos that is happening in the world we are all navigating right now. I know there are challenges and more likely to impact public schools in this community there to come. It doesn't matter what religion they practice, if they practice any. We teach these students, and we want their success. It doesn't matter who makes up their family or who their parents love. We teach these students to and advocate for their success. Finally, it doesn't matter to us whose parents, who their parents voted for.
Thank you. Sorry, Tricia, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will teach them to. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jessica Liebman.
Liebman, thank you.
All right. Good evening. Longtime lurker, first-time speaker. While our nation mourns the hundreds of children and educators lost to school violence, while we watch the people of Gaza being starved and slaughtered, while we reel from the recent lynching of a black man, I can't help but notice where the outrage is most loudly directed. The First Amendment protects speech we both love and hate. It protects dissent and moral judgment about public figures. What it does not protect is the coordinated harassment designed to destroy someone's livelihood. What we're all collectively experiencing is the most aggressive and straightforward attack on free speech in this country and in our lifetime. I don't know how many of you know about this, but a social studies teacher in our rural district recently exercised her right to speak as a private citizen. Her statement read, "Just so everyone is aware, the Lord indeed does not say 'well done' to racist homophobic misogynists that use their vast platform to spread hate. When you bear no fruit of the Spirit, you have not been a faithful servant." That comment, however pointed, isn't hate speech. It's a moral and religious opinion, the very type of speech that the First Amendment exists to protect. My concern isn't her words, but the responding call to action for retaliation. This wasn't a spontaneous disagreement. It was a coordinated doxing campaign with the explicit intent of getting her fired and ruining her reputation. There's proof of people organizing to expose her workplace and pressure the district to fire her and keep her as far away from the children as possible, some of which are in this room tonight. There was no call to bring her into a conversation for discussion, her clarification. There was a call to destroy her. It's important to note that the man who started this smear campaign is a disgraced former radio personality who recently lost his own job for making racist remarks. When someone with that history targets a black educator in a rural community, we should all be encouraged to question his motives. And why does he feel so emboldened to attack those he disagrees with? Unfortunately, this is definitely not an isolated event. Across the country, political groups have inserted themselves into local education governing, turning our schools into battlegrounds for political agendas. Individuals in positions of power actively advancing these harmful ideologies within the public education system and within the very fabric of our society, creating an uneven and unsafe playing field for teachers, students, and any human who speaks out. Accountability has to be consistent, even-handed, not selective, and not political. Allowing this coordinated attack and harassment campaign to succeed lets everybody know that intimidation works here. I encourage the board to stand on principle, protect your teachers, protect the integrity of our schools, and do not let intimidation and political weaponization decide who gets to speak, who gets to teach, and who gets to be heard. Thank you.
All right, next speaker is Amy Benninghoffen.
Good evening, everyone. Well, I was going to do a moment of silence on behalf of all the tragedies and innocent lives that's been taken recently, but since you already did that, I'll go ahead and skip to what I was going to do. Which was actually pray. I think there's a lot of hurting people tonight all over the world, and so I just wanted to pray for all of us. So, excuse me. Lord, I come to you tonight, and I lift up our students, the faculty, this community, and all those around the world that are hurting. May you comfort them, Lord, for those crying out, asking why, may you give them peace that passes all understanding. Lord, help us to navigate through this crazy world with clarity of mind, fearless, and bold in who you have created us to be. Help us, Lord, to be the light in the darkness. God, I pray that through these tragedies, you would draw the loss to you. May they feel the love you have for them. God, I come to you humbly and ask for you to heal this land. Being near to the brokenhearted, I ask that they feel your presence. In your mighty name I pray, Jesus, amen.
All right, the next speaker is Amanda Knittle.
Okay, first I want to start with some gratitude. My daughter's at North Point Middle, and she's had a wonderful start to the school year. Her theater teacher has been one of her all-time favorites, and her social studies teacher, in her word, slays. So, thank you to our teachers. Thank you for creating an environment where she feels challenged and supported. Unfortunately, this week, things have changed a little bit, gotten a little bit strange. One of those favorite teachers suddenly wasn't in class anymore. And yesterday, on Constitution Day, of all days, my daughter didn't learn about the promise of free speech. She learned that, sorry, she learned that rights can disappear if enough people get angry. Right now, she has a substitute teacher, a little bit of an unstable learning environment, not because her teacher failed in the classroom in any way, but because words spoken privately and off-duty were weaponized into outrage. We all know grief and anger are powerful, and we can't take away from that. They can unite us or divide us. But good leadership channels them into solutions. Reactive leadership lets them fuel vengeance. And vengeance has real consequences. Courts have been clear, public school employees do not give up their First Amendment rights when they leave work. When teachers speak as private citizens on matters of public concern, that speech is protected. We cannot be allowed, what cannot be allowed is what our courts call a heckler's veto, which is when outside voices manufacture disruption and pressure schools to silence lawful speech. Punishing educators for lawful off-duty expression is viewpoint discrimination, and it's not just a legal issue, it's practical. It drives away great teachers. It risks costly lawsuits that drain resources from our students. And it sets an example that rights are conditional and not guaranteed. So tonight, I ask you to reflect on the precedent that could be set in our district. Because if we allow outside pressure to dictate decisions once, it won't stop. It will keep coming until no teacher, no leader, no one in this district feels safe to speak, to teach, or to serve. So for the sake of our educators and our students, and the future and integrity of this district, I urge you to not let our collective grief and our collective pain dictate our decisions and lead us down a very dangerous path. Thank you.
Next speaker is Megan Kurz.
Hi, I am Megan Kurz, and I am a resident, parent, and also work for the district. Unfortunately, across our country, we've seen educators come under fire for lawful, private, social media posts, some of which we are very aware of how private our social media needs to be. We hand-select every person that we usually friend. Posts that don't name students, families, schools, school districts, but simply express personal viewpoints. These cases are less about professional misconduct and more about political disagreements spilling into education. Again, our own district's conduct policy makes it clear that staff is expect, what is expected of staff. It speaks to preparing for instructions, supervising students, communicating with respect, protecting confidentiality. protecting confidentiality, following safety guidelines and maintaining professional boundaries. These are important. These are reasonable. And they all focus squarely on what happens in the classroom and on school time. What the policy does not do is police lawful, private expression of values outside of school. A nameless, viewpoint-based post on a private page does not violate these standards. To stretch the policy, this way would be to expand it beyond its purpose. From protecting students in schools to monitoring teachers' personal lives. We go down that path, we risk creating fear rather than professionalism. What would undermine teacher morale? Recruitment, retention, while distracting us from the real work of supporting student learning. The strength of this district comes from supporting teachers in their professional roles and holding them accountable where it matters most, in the classroom. I urge everyone to focus their teachers also. Thank you for showing up daily.
Next speaker, Jen Olson.
My name is Jen Olson. I'm speaking tonight not as a board member, but as a private citizen and fellow American. Last Wednesday, September 10th, 2025, at 12:23 PM, in front of thousands of young American students, Charlie Kirk, the founder of Turning Point USA, was publicly executed by a deranged coward. What was Charlie's crime? Encouraging young people to engage in the free exchange of ideas in pursuit of the truth. Free speech is a founding doctrine in our country. Charlie was killed for exercising that right. We must not let this become our reality. Young people in our country are searching for truth and direction. It's our duty to maintain a society where they can safely and freely debate ideas and choose the path they wish to take. That doesn't happen by labeling people as bigots, racists, homophobes, xenophobes, transphobes, fascists, or Nazis for simply expressing their opinions. All that does is create more deranged monsters who will fail to win civil debates and turn to violence in an attempt to snuff out their opposition. Staff, students, families, and community members from across this district are very distraught right now. Not just from what they witnessed last Wednesday, but also by the reaction and behavior of some people in the aftermath. There are a lot of people who legitimately feel as though some of their peers, colleagues, friends, and loved ones would dance on their graves if they were the ones who were murdered instead of Charlie. This is unacceptable. We must ensure that our students know their voices matter and that it's okay to have differing opinions. We need to protect their right to express their ideas without the threat of violence or death. Words alone are not violence and we need to stop saying that they are. That mindset killed Charlie. Words are an opportunity to learn from one another and understand each other. Regardless of whether or not the words hurt our feelings or bring us joy, we should always protect the right to speak them. When we stand by in silence as free speech is snuffed out, we not only fail our children, but we also fail each other and our country. When we tell the youth of our nation that it's not okay to say something that may hurt someone's feelings, we're silencing them and snuffing out their voices. If we continue this path, we will be the ones responsible for the collapse of this great nation. To the students of this district, do not be afraid to speak your mind. Do not allow intimidation and fear tactics to silence you. You are not alone in your beliefs and opinions. Your voice matters. Every last one of you has a duty to this country to shape our future and to exercise our rights as Americans. Because if you don't exercise them, you will lose them. We all will. I encourage our students to email the TPUSA's regional manager, Jordan Landau, at J O R D Y N dot L A N D A U at TPUSA.com or visit TPUSAstudents.com to learn how you can start a Turning Point Club America chapter in each of our high schools. It's a simple process. Please take part in the search for truth because your country depends on it.
All right, our last speaker is Katie Vanderpluug.
Sorry if I said that incorrectly. It's good, it's fine. It's Vanderpluug. It's a lot. I married it. So just to start, my name is Katie Vanderpluug. I am a parent. I am a resident. I am also a district employee. I'm the assessment coach of the district. I came tonight out of an immense love for our teachers and to specifically take a moment to celebrate the incredible work that our educators have put in in this first month of school. But I also want to acknowledge and say thank you to Jen for supporting our teachers' ability to speak freely and without fear. And so I just, I appreciate that. So I just wanted to say thank you for that. So I do, I do appreciate that. As the district's assessment coach, I've had the privilege of leading professional development on standards-based grading for our K-5 teachers. This shift has been a 12-year process in our district, but we recognize that it requires a significant change in thinking and a lot of dedicated effort has gone into making this change in classrooms across the district. This change takes work. It takes a mindset shift. And I can't tell you the work that I have seen our teachers put in to this change and the way that they have embraced it and have welcomed me in and allowed me to work with them and talk through questions so that they can accurately assess and report what students know and are able to do independently, aligned to our standards so that families and teachers and the community has a better idea and understanding of what it looks like to be proficient. This amazing work is even extending into our middle and high schools. We have teachers voluntarily embracing a standards-based mindset, assigning, assessing students on what they know and what they can do based on standards. They know that this approach gives them a clearer picture of student success in their courses. And they are doing this work simply because they know it's what's right for kids. They are putting in work that they're not required to do because that's how much they love our students. Everything that our educators do each day reflects the commitment to our students. And I am honored to publicly celebrate every single educator in the Wentzville School District. And I thank them for the opportunity to get to the work, to get to do the work that I get to do because of them. So thank you all.
Thank you to all the speakers this evening. And next we are moving on to district comments.
I also want to thank all our speakers. Appreciate everybody's participation. Last week, we celebrated Patriot Day throughout the district. Remembered the events of 9/11, honored our brave first responders who serve in our community daily and those who have lost their lives. Their dedication encourages, inspire us all every single day. So thank you to all of our brave first responders. And again, we remember everybody who lost people in 9/11. Constitution Day was yesterday, as it's already been mentioned. Schools across the district celebrated Constitution Day, which commemorates the culmination of the work of the Constitutional Convention with the Signing of the US Constitution on September 17, 1787. Staff taught about the signing and the significance of the Constitution in a variety of ways, from teaching key facts to bulletin boards to spirit days. I will also say here at the central office, people got to hear me speak about my pure joy of government and Constitution as I was providing malon history lessons up here. All right, that fell on my face. I tried. But I did do that, did I not, Dr. Lebrun? Transportation, some good news here. We have added three more drivers to routes last week. We're hoping to have five more added by tomorrow. We've added a couple more, so that would be eight in two weeks. We have more in the hopper that are coming forward. So again, those of you that have recruited for us, we greatly appreciate that. Please keep doing that. We had two more walk-ins today. So thank you very much for everybody's help with doing that. Keep spreading that word, please. And then mark your calendars in a very unique Wentzville tradition that makes it still, makes a big city feel like a small town. We have our entire Wentzville School District Homecoming Parade on October 4th. If you have not been there, you should go. It is a blast. We will start at Hold High School beginning at 9:30. Travel down Pierce Boulevard and end at the American Legion Hall. If you've got kids or if you just have a sweet tooth, make sure you line streets because there's plenty of candy coming your way. And thank you for everything you're doing and the support we've felt throughout the entire year. Keep up the great work.
Thank you very much. All right. Next, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Sorry. Was... Can we, I guess. Yeah, we'll roll call, please. Sorry.
I was trying to get a question in.
Sorry, I guess I didn't realize for discussion. Please go ahead.
And I know it's not normal, but I think that there's questions that I, that are happening in the community about, and I don't know if it's still in the consent or not, but for the funding for the remodel of the admin building. Is that, has that been pulled out of consent? Okay, I wanted to make sure that was the main point I wanted to get in there. Thank you.
Any other discussion about consent agenda? So we'll take a roll call for the consent agenda, please. We have a motion in a second.
Secretary Bezenthall.
Aye.
Director Olson.
Aye.
Director Wei. Director Lewis.
Aye.
President Scott.
Aye.
Vice President Walsh.
Aye.
Director Hanky.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Moving to old business, for we have, we need a motion to approve the revised Policy 2770, seclusion and restraint as presented, and to rescind Policy 2674 for use of physical restraint intervention.
I, I mean, motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we need a motion to approve the revised Policy 4325, Leave Under the Family and Medical Leave Act as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving to new business, 15.1. We need a motion to approve the personnel recommendations and resignations as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Secretary Bezenthall.
Aye.
Director Olson.
Aye.
Director Wei. Director Lewis.
Aye.
President Scott.
Aye.
Vice President Walsh.
Aye.
Director Hanky.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We need a motion to approve the Leader and Me Custom Coaching Agreement as presented.
Motion. Second.
Director Lewis, I believe you'd have this pulled to new business.
Yes, I appreciate that. And what I wanted to bring up on this is, we've talked about this and I've talked about it maybe betterly, better said for three years, Leader and Me was approved 2.8 million, if I remember right, right before the 23 election. At that time, we were told that it was basically free money from E-Rate or, I forget what, what it was at that time, but a million dollars came from our, our funding. At that time, there was discussion about the fact that it was a big benefit and that that was going to be the cost that we bore. Now we're looking at another 200 and, or $151,000 for an extension. That's exactly what I was speaking to originally when we talked about the fact that this is going to be a never-ending give. I listened to the, the teachers and those supporting the teachers. And as a former union member, I appreciate what you're saying and what you're doing. You may not believe that, but I do. I'm CWA 670, 6171 as union steward, so I know where you're coming from. What I want to tell you is that we're pushing so much on the teachers right now that is not directed toward the learning experience. I've got another file that we're going to talk to a little bit later on about results for the last three years. Anytime we're doing something that is not bottom-line, helping the kids learn what they went to school for, shouldn't be on our agenda. We cannot afford to have our students scoring 50% or less on basic math, basic reading, basic science, basic social studies. This is another example where we're spending money that shouldn't be spent until we get our house in order. And for that reason, I highly advocate that we vote no for this and that we take, once and for all, take Leader and Me off the board so that the full amount of time that the teachers have their students, they can teach them meaningful things. And I'm not saying that health, mental health, education, all that is not important. I know there's, there's a lot of points on that. We've got a lot of resources assigned to that already. I'm talking about teaching them basic skills so they can go out and earn a meaningful living, be productive citizens. Leader and Me does not help them achieve the basic reading, writing, and math and science skills that are needed. I implore everybody to vote no for this. Thank you.
Okay, but Director Lewis, I think maybe you misunderstood what this is. So this is no cost. This is zero. So what's going on is Leader and Me provides resources. We don't need those resources. So in lieu of those resources, they agreed to trade us, letting them keep those resources for coaching. So there's no cost here at all. We're also not extending the agreement with Leader and Me. This is simply an amendment to the contract. So we haven't changed anything except instead of allowing resources that we don't need, paper resources because we use them digitally, they're giving us a reach, a check on those. They weren't going to give you a refund because they can't. What they'll do now is just customize coaching, which Katie can talk a lot about what that coaching is. But one of the things it's going to do that you're going to see with the other contract is it allows micro credentials to be earned by students with leadership certificates that are really valuable. So I, I think maybe in this case, we misunderstood what, what this was. It's just a swapping of resources that were already agreed to for coaching.
Well, that's a positive statement that you made, that we're not going forth Leader and Me.
I didn't say that. I said, I'm not extending that contract. I said, this doesn't extend the contract.
Well, the contract was for three years originally, right?
We're still right where we're at. This literally, when you read it, it doesn't change a single part of the contract. Other than we're trading dip materials for coaching. That's it.
The contract, I understand your statement.
Okay.
The contract was originally signed in the spring of 23. So we're on our last year of Leader and Me. You said you're not extending it. Does that mean that at the end of this school year, Leader and Me is over?
I haven't reviewed the contract. What I'm saying is it's, first of all, I think the contract was five years, not three. If we go back and look at it, I'm fairly certain it was five, but I don't have it in front of me to do that. All I'm simply saying, as you said, it was $151,000. Our cost is zero. That's really all I was trying to tell you. And I'm just making sure you understood what we're talking about before we say vote no. It's not costing us anything, nor can we, all you're doing by voting no is saying, okay, give us the paper materials that we want instead of coaching. That, that's what we're voting no for. This is just to change the contract to allow for coaching instead of paper materials.
So coaching for what?
Katie, do you want to talk through what that coaching looks like?
So within our buildings, we have student lighthouse teams, staff lighthouse teams. We're able to have people come in and work, align goals, align resources, academic strategies, help us with PLC work and how we're encouraging academics, leadership, culture within our buildings and meeting our school improvement goals. So it's just an extra resource for our teachers, an extra place for them to go when they need some assistance.
Thank you for the feedback. So we're just encouraging more depth. We're taking Leader and Me deeper into the school system is what I'm hearing. Great.
I have a question. Sorry, Julie, did you have a question? Okay. So is this like prepping us to become a lighthouse school or district? Is this like the steps that we would need to take to become a lighthouse district?
There's various paths to lighthouse status. It depends where individual buildings are within their journey. I believe we potentially could have one that's ready, but they haven't declared that they are. I haven't been involved in that process. But it's something that teachers are working very hard on and kids are benefiting greatly from.
Any other discussion?
Yes, I had a question. So is, when does the training occur for our teachers? Is it during school hours? Is it after hours during their planned time? When does this coaching occur?
So we have various times. There's times where we have pieces that are woven into our curriculum, like into our curriculum writing process, if it deals with academics and things like that. We do leadership training with our administration, with our administrators. We utilize coaches for that. Sometimes coaches are brought in, teachers reach out, building administration reaches out. They can do some professional learning on late start days or they'll come in and do some sessions with kids, with lighthouse teams of kids. We had a lighthouse team at team at Liberty last last week or the week before that a secondary Leader and Me coach came in and worked with those students on picking four values that they were going to work towards as a group and help freshmen become acclimated to the building. And so there was some coaching that was done with that. It's really, really customizable. So if we need an hour, if we need thirty minutes, if we need virtual, if we need in person, it just allows us to tap into an additional resource if people are wanting some additional assistance and support.
And just kind of a comment, I've had students talk to me about Leader and Me, and they don't like it, to be completely frank. They don't like that it's asking them to set goals for themselves. They feel that that is the teacher's job. It's the teacher's job to teach them. It's not the student's job to come up with their goal. I mean, their goal is to make an A, to get a passing grade. And it's the teacher's responsibility then to how do we get there? And they also don't like that it's asking them personal questions. What's your goals outside of school? They were pretty frank with me and said, it's none of your business. So I think putting more into this when students believe it's taking away from their education time isn't a great idea. So I mean, I I do not support Leader and Me, and I will, I will not support even getting the coaching for this.
Any other discussion? Yes, Director Lewis?
Brian, you talked about there's no cost part of this. I mean, I I didn't see where there said there's no cost. What I see is payment terms where we have it, we got thirty days.
If you read the memo where it talks to you about a cost analysis, the cost is zero. The payment is the normal payment where you make for the pre-purchased materials that were already purchased in the original agreement. This is simply a trade of those materials for the coaching.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion from the board?
I hesitated to share this for just a second because it is a little bit personal concerning one of my own children, but I would say I had my son have the exact opposite with Leader and Me. He found goal setting incredibly helpful and increased his reading I Ready score significantly based on his goals that he had set with his teacher. And those continued, you know, to spill over into other ways. So I, you know, I'm not here to argue any benefits or or good or bad for the program, but I do think, you know, it is important, you know, my N is one, but, you know, to continue this contract. So any other discussion before we vote?
I'd like to just say one more thing. I I worry a little bit. I understand Leader and Me, the district agreed to it five years. I understand a lot of people on this board weren't there. I wasn't sitting in this chair or anything else. It's an agreement that was made. The money's already been spent. I would strongly discourage purchasing materials that we have no need for and just letting them sit there. That, to me, makes no sense where if anybody can get an ounce of help or assistance out of something that's free that's being traded, it makes way more sense than that for materials that we just don't need. So it took a lot of work to even get Covey to negotiate that. It was a big deal to do that. So I think if anybody benefits at all from the coaching, then it was a worthwhile trade as opposed to materials we just don't need. So that would be the one thing I'd encourage people to really think about, too. It really doesn't make sense to just have paper materials sitting there we're not going to use, and we can get some benefit out of the coaching. So.
So why, why would we have material that we wouldn't be using then? Why, why would that even be on our purchase or what we're wanting?
Right. So when we initiate, when the contract was initiated before, what was it, three years ago, we said, the there was like workbook materials that were used. And now, just with things changing, it's more of a digital platform, and you're able to kind of pick and choose the different pieces that you use instead of following a workbook front to back. So it's just evolved.
So, so the, so it's a workbook that we're switching out with coaching time?
It's a learning companion. So we have access to everything that's in the learning companions into the booklets. It's all done digitally, and teachers are able to pull. Some buildings do still utilize the workbook materials, but a lot of them just don't have need for all the things that are in there.
So then are different teachers doing different things? Because you're saying some are using the workbooks and some are not?
Every building is customized it to make it work for them and for their students. They work at the at the lighthouse team level to plan for their building and where and to kind of meet everybody at their needs and where their buildings are. So they have that autonomy as a building to make that decision on how it's implemented into their building, just like with a lot of things.
Okay, so just every building does Leader and Me a little bit different depending on their students then?
Depending on their students, depending on their goals, depending on their lighthouse team and how they've written goals in the area of leadership, academics, and culture, depending on their needs, just general needs in the building. We set some district goals with our MRA surveys as as a school district. They also set goals around their MRA survey, and a lot of that work is driven with their Leader and Me stuff, too. So and every building is different.
I'm just a little confused why it would be different when we have our MSIP, our CSIP, which has one goal for the district, but then we're doing different things and we're using Leader and Me as an outlet to do different things.
We have one goal as a district in the area of belonging. So there's just, there's multiple pieces to that. But every building then, when we meet with them and set that goal, they have different action steps and how they're going to meet that goal. And so we we meet with them individually, and they sit and they individualize things based on on their needs and where they are. Does that make sense?
Any other discussion before we vote? Okay, Joni, roll call, please.
Secretary Bezenthall?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Way? Director Lewis?
Nay.
President Scott?
Aye.
Vice President Walsh?
Aye.
Director Hanky?
Nay.
Motion carries.
Next, we need a motion to approve the online portal access for high school students as presented.
Motion. Second.
All right, any discussion?
I'm not sure who pulled that.
Can Katie or Jerry explain this to us?
So this piece in our secondary curriculum gives our students the opportunity to learn to earn micro credentials. So they go through project-based learning in order to earn micro credentials in eight areas with the habits, achieving goals, strengthening wellness, finding their voice, developing high trust relationships, contributing to our community, succeeding with people, and leading teams. And then once they earn that credential, then that is theirs to use on a resume. It's been scored and certified by their teacher and by Franklin Covey, which is widely known. They can use it on college applications. They can use any of those things. And if they earn all eight of them, they receive like the overall leadership certificate credential that they then are recognized for by the school district and by Covey. It is different. There's different modules, and so students are able to kind of pick different entry points where they will write a problem statement about a real world problem that needs to be addressed. They create action plans, and then they carry out the action plans and produce the final product to present to a to a board, to a group of people. And then that work is evaluated to see if they earn then that credential. So and this is only at the high school level, at the secondary level.
So is this kind of the same deal? We're swapping out books for?
So not really, um, with secondary. So this is a way that programming at the secondary level, just really working on making intentional and more relevant, especially with success-ready and career ticket with everything we're doing to create kids that are ready beyond high school in whatever field they choose. This was a way to make this work very relevant and applicable for them post-high school.
Right. But how did we get it for zero dollars?
Uh, it's, it is, it is what the secondary programming is.
That we already paid for back in twenty-three?
Yep. It's what the secondary programming is.
Okay. And all of these things that they're going to micro credential for, is that outside of school time?
Um, it can be in clubs. It can be in advisory.
And not during class time?
It can, it can be a class if that class, if a leadership class is offered. It can also be during like the nest time or den time, some of that, the extra time that they have, or during power lunch if they have clubs and and times that they they would have time to work on that.
So it's more so extracurricular?
Correct. Yeah, elective based, yeah. And choice, and they get the choice to do it.
What are, oh, go. Sorry. What are like the long-term? I want to say, I'll just say strings. What are the long-term strings for this? Is there something where this is going to grow into something else that we're going to sign on to in three years? Or is this, is this standalone, three years till the end of our contract?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So this, this is what now we'll take, what will be the secondary programming. It like the, we were talking about the workbooks for elementary and the lessons and things like that. This is how Leader and Me looks at the secondary level.
So it's kind of like a voluntary thing on the secondary level?
Um, it it is more interest-based. Kids, you know, are given a voice in various ways. Student lighthouse teams have a lot of voice in how, like I said, I used the example of Liberty earlier. They met and were really working with the freshmen. Sometimes the high schools, in the similar to elementary and middle, it looks different in every single one of our high schools. So it's, it's really like, I mean, I encourage you to continue to ask the high schools those questions and how it looks because it does look different in all four of them. We sat in on a lighthouse team meeting last week, and kids were so thankful just to have a place to have a voice that they could be decision makers and help kids that were coming into Liberty learn their way. Holt has a course, a leadership course that is offered that they'll be going through some of these lesson modules together. It's eight credentials, and they're, it's, it's hard work. It's hard work to earn them. So kids that are really motivated to do it are really excited about it. So but I encourage you to, and we can set up some visits at high school to see it. I also have a really good video that I can share with at Staying On Board that kind of explains each of the eight individually and just some of the things that are in there.
Any other discussion or questions? Thank you, Dr. Betschneider. We will take a roll call vote, please.
Secretary Bezenthall?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Way? Director Lewis?
Nay.
President Scott?
Aye.
Vice President Walsh?
Aye.
Director Hanky?
Nay.
Motion carries.
Next, we will have a discussion on the Apple and Google professional development?
We brought this, the administration brought it to the board to discuss. I'm going to let Katie and Pat kind of talk through both what we're looking at. Ultimately, what it is, is bigger corporations like Google and Apple and things like that now, when they do the, they they submit contracts that we go to PD. We've approved those PDs in the past on this multiple times. However, they are changing the wording, looking for things like an ethics officer to say certain things, and it kind of gets into a policy violation of thirty-one eighty-one. So the short version, and then I'll let these guys talk more about it. We send somebody to Google. In the past, Google is just part of your deal that you go, you go to your PD, they pay for the lunch, they do all that kind of stuff. Google now, Apple as well, have switched to where now they want this to be deemed, they they call it a, it's on the contract here, let me find it real quick. A gift, basically, which would violate policy thirty-one eighty-one. And so the discussion is, we do need to send people to these things. The question becomes, do we modify the policy for something like this, or do we just pay for it as part of our PD money? And so I, and no, I'm simplifying it. I don't know, Pat or Katie, if you've got anything to share, but that's, that's pretty much the simplest way I can explain it.
Okay, so. This, this.
Hold on, I think it was Jen, or if you don't mind for just a second, Katie, were you going to explain it now or?
No, I mean, I think that that you did a really good job. That was simple language, and so we can go with questions.
Um. Did they used to pay for the hotel, transportation, all of that?
Yeah. So my understanding of that was just included, but we never had to say that it was a deal. Like, as far as that's part of what the the professional development was, you stay there, they take care of those things.
Included in what though, if we didn't pay for anything?
So for example, a Google conference, they said, you know, we, and sometimes conferences do this, too. They offer to pay for your registration, or like give you like swag, like a cinch sack bag and post notes and pens. They, that was always just kind of part of what happened when it, not, not when you went to all conferences, but a conference like a Google conference or an Apple conference or something like that. Now, what's being required is they're making us acknowledge that we're receiving those things and kind of listing it out. So the one that is in here for Google is accommodations, meals, swag, and ground transportation. So providing transportation to and from so that the district wouldn't have to pay for that. Google would would pay for that. And Apple, the Apple one, I believe, was a meal. They provided a meal.
Apple provided a meal, not a hotel and transportation?
Apple was.
Swag.
Um. It was hosting you for your meals directly associated with this event is what, what's the most recent one. It changes, like, these are just two that came across our desk, and we were like, okay, we, like, we need to, now that it's in writing and on paper, we need to have this conversation.
Okay, so I guess where I'm at with this is, like, for instance, in MSBA conference, you pay the two hundred and eighty-five dollars, and you have like a meal included, or I think you get lunch in a brown paper bag for both days that you're there. I don't consider that a gift. I consider that part of the two hundred and eighty-five dollars we paid for. When there's no exchange of money with Google and Apple, two of the largest corporations in the world, everything they're doing is a gift, which is, in my opinion, yes, we all love Google and Apple. We've all probably got Apple phones and Google phones, computers, watches, everything. It's literally, it runs our world. It's kind of a bully tactic for the education industry because it snuffs out the other companies or other product software that could be advertised or. School districts could be participating in or using their services because those companies maybe can't afford to wine and dine the entire education industry to get them to buy into their products, which is what they say in the contract, that it could be their lobbyists that are, you know, dealing with our people that we send out there. We frown upon that in the legislature. It's kind of gross when, you know, we talk about DC doing it or Jeff City doing it. And I think it's still, it's got that same feeling at this level, too, because, as I said, it, it doesn't give the other people the same opportunity because they wouldn't have the funding to pay for everybody to come to their conference and pay for their meals and their housing and swag. So I, I think if there's a paid option for these conferences, by all means, we should do that. But this doesn't.
So there, there is. If we want to spend district money to do that, we can absolutely do that. That's why we're bringing it to you guys to ask that discussion. This is the discussion aspect of that. There, there is. We can pay our own way. We can absolutely pay our own way if that's what we as a district want to choose. Again, we're bringing it to you guys because this is really something new that's shifting with these bigger groups. And we chose not to sign it because we viewed it as a violation of policy thirty-one seventy. And in order to do that, we're not going to sign it until you guys say we're going to And in order to do that, we're not going to sign it until you guys say we're going to revise the policy, or we're going to pay our own way. So that's, that's the discussion aspect of it, you're saying it exactly the reason why we're bringing it to you guys. The, the discussion is, we either need to revise 3170 where it's not a policy violation, or we need to say, okay, we're not willing to revise it, we do believe these are gifts, and we're going to pay our own way. That, that's the discussion aspect.
And I agree, I think, I think the policy, the way it is, is good. I think it helps us to ensure the integrity of the process of choosing what vendors we go with, and to ensure, you know, that whoever it is in that position, or whoever's going to go to the conference, isn't influenced, which is, you know, what the policy is there for, and so that we can, the board, who's relying on their opinion, can entrust that, or we can have some confidence that there wasn't, you know, the swag, or the free this and that. The whining and dining isn't the reason we're going with them. So I think paying our own way would probably be the best route, in my opinion.
Go ahead.
Two, kind of two questions. One, from a legal standpoint, is that why, is there something that came down that is maybe pushing the envelope for Google and Apple to do this? Or are they just trying to make more money, possibly? Is there like anything, legally speaking, and then secondary, like, by paying our own way for some of these now, obviously, that's going to take a hit to the professional development budget. Like, I guess there's no way to know for sure, like, what kind of opportunities we'd potentially miss out on with reallocating resources, but I guess, something along those lines, like, is there a way to still be able to provide opportunities, but not be influenced by the swag?
I'll let Pat answer a little bit of the legal. What I would say is, it's hard for us to say why Google or Apple's choosing to do that. It's kind of hard for us to kind of get in their brain and do it. I think Pat can kind of give you a legal reason why he would think they'd maybe do that, and then I'll answer the second part.
So in terms of like, the legal component of it, I think they're kind of shifting the burden on to the attendees to demonstrate compliance. What they're really concerned about, it's not so much legal compliance, but they don't want to be precluded from being able to contract with us, with the attendees, by virtue of having given these free gifts. That's the exact opposite of what they want to do. Under some state laws, there are provisions that would categorically exclude receiving a gift with an existing vendor, and it could preclude that entity from contracting with Google or Apple in the future. That's exactly what our policy says, but Missouri doesn't have a state law component of that. So, for example, in the context of the Google conference, they weren't concerned about whether it violates our policy at all. They wanted a certification saying it doesn't violate state law, which is true, but when we dug into it more, we didn't want to sign a statement that said, yeah, technically, this is true, but if we send you, it's still a violation of the, the policy. So, um, one, I think they're shifting the burden for compliance, two, they don't want to lose business, and three, quite honestly, like, this is just the best way that they have to continue to influence the decision-makers for contracts. So, um, they're going to do everything that they can to get people there.
I answer your question real quick. Yes, I mean, anytime you make a decision where you're going to send people for professional development, there's only X amount of money to do that. We already do that a lot, like, we evaluate every professional development. We really take a lot of time looking it out of town, because that costs a lot more money to send somebody out of town. So, yes, any, every single option we choose for PD, it's, it's definitely something that can impact another opportunity we would have.
And this is just for Greg, though, right? That's what it says in the memo?
Yeah, Greg was the original one, I mean, Arla could go if we need her to go for something, but it would be mostly just our techs or our tech coaches, is the people that are directly dealing with that stuff on an everyday basis.
Yes, I was going to ask a couple of things. How many of these conferences a year do we typically send to, like, Apple or Google? And, I mean, is it multiple a year?
Not really, um, there, I mean, there's different, like, training sessions, um, these are more, um, these two are a little bit different. And like, this is just one. We had people go to a Google professional workspace conference on AI. That was different than this, there wasn't anything tied to it. So it really just depends, I think, what, what the topic is. The reason these two came up is because the signatures came with it, and so that's, that's why we brought it here.
Thank you.
These are the only two that, that I've seen like this.
And, you know, working in healthcare, there's been, you know, there's only so many, you can't really accept gifts. I mean, pharmaceutical industry used to be able to send people on golf trips into the Bahamas, and now you can't even take a pen. So, um, you know, there are some legal ramifications to that, and, you know, Sunshine Act and, and various kind of legislative monitors of that. Do you know, does that exist for, like, education, where, you know, like, it's reportable if we, you know, Wellensville's taken $10,000 worth of free stuff from Apple, versus like, Francis Hall took zero. I mean, like, is that like a national database or anything like that?
I don't think it's a national database, but certainly it, it would be discoverable through Sunshine Law requests, given that these certifications are now being required. I mean, the certification for Apple specifically delineated each item and the value of that item the attendee would receive. So, certainly, I think all of our neighboring school districts are using the same major national service providers like Google and Apple, to a certain extent, and attending these conferences. So, I certainly think it would be discoverable.
So, kind of my, and just question about like this, or another one, it's like, if we, we obviously partner with Google and Apple currently, and would that be something to where, hey, when we're signing up for something, you, part of what we're paying for would be to provide training where we will cover you guys getting there? Like, is, would that be outside of this policy currently? Or is this just a one-off example, I guess?
I mean, this is really just for professional development and continuing training certifications, things like that. When we purchase, and, and I don't know, Arla can probably jump in if she wants to, but when you purchase devices and you do things like that, you do get ultimately training components that come with that, how to utilize this, how to utilize that. This would be separate from that, so the, the training purposes you're talking about are there, this is separate. This is, how do I continue to upgrade my certifications? Like, Apple's a great example that Pat just gave there. So, you go to this conference, you get your upgraded certification, so you become more prevalent, as we continue up moving operating systems, Google might be the same way. The, the reality is, we'll probably still have to send people here, because they're integrated into our buildings. Like, it's not, and, and again, we bit it out, but as you guys all know, you've got Microsoft, you've got Google, and you've got Apple. There's not a ton of options there. And so, our people have to continue to get trained in order to operate the newest and latest things that are going on in the operating system. So, it's just a matter of, in my mind, do we want to pay for it? Or do we want to change this policy to accept it as what they're putting it out there now? My personal preference, honestly, I like it clean, and that's, we need to pay for it. But that's my preference, but I also understand coming with that means we're spending dollars that we could in turn be receiving as, as they're doing that, so I don't think that's my place to just automatically say, we're going to make that decision, that's why we brought it for discussion.
Was, what would your thoughts be, or just throwing it out there, any sort of like dollar limit for, like, acceptance of a gift? Like, $200 or $500, or something like that? Or would you prefer it to be just clean, yes or no?
Well, I think, let's use this for an example, Katie, do you remember, I know Greg was reaching out to Google to see what this even entailed. I don't know that there was even an option to pay for part and accept part, I think it was all or nothing. So like, it was either an all or nothing, so I, in my mind, I think that's just the way they're headed, and we just need to decide. And, and again, there's no vote or anything, it's kind of one of those things, do you want us to go explore a 3171, or 3170 adjustment policy? Or do you just want us to keep the way we're doing it, and we'll progress that way? That's, that really was discussion. It seems to me like, right now, I'm not hearing a lot, that we want to change 3170 with vendor relations, we kind of want to keep it the same. So I would say, if somebody's got a different perspective on that, now would be a good time to say that. If not, I think we move forward with the way 3170 is, and we say we're good.
All right, next up, 15.5 student assessment data discussion. This was added to the agenda from Director Lewis. For just reference, we will have like a, and for the public, I guess, that there will be, you know, further discussion in next month's meeting about various test results, but we're going to have this ahead of that for, so go right ahead.
Thanks, Julie, I appreciate the opportunity to discuss this. This is something that has been on my list for the last couple of years, since being in here, because stats and, and numbers can be stacked and looked at a lot of different ways. Each year, we get a summary of numbers that, to me, are really concerning. And I just asked this past month, give us a review by grade, K through A, both with MAP testing, as well as with I-Ready. And, and what, what we can see here in this first slide, can you go to the, the slide that shows MAP testing and I-Ready? There you go, maybe make it big so people can read it a little bit. So, as big as we can, there we go. I mean, so what, what we're really seeing here is, is an example, you know, with MAP testing. I'm seeing in 23 is 47, and 24 was 51, and in 25, it was basically a flattened number. You can see by grades, all these are in the 40s and the 50s, except for when you get down to a grade eight, there's, and, and at grade eight, there's a 60. I mean, I'm, I'm looking at this, and I'm going, what in the heck is going on? Why are 50% of our students not proficient or excelling? You know, we know it's not the teachers, because teachers are amazing, they're overloaded with everything, we've heard that through eight or nine speakers today. I don't say it tongue-in-cheek, I mean that. I mean, I support them, and I, my, my whole point of this is, how do we find more time so you can teach? And that's why I talked about Leader and Me, how I did. We know it's not the administration, because they're amazing people as well, I mean, they worked their tail off. Yet, we still have these results, so what's the answer? How are we going to raise this? As a board, I'm, I'm challenging the board to challenge the district to say, what are we going to do to get our act together? It's not anybody's fault, it's everybody's fault, what is the board's fault? Board's fault is not pushing this harder. And personally, I'm, I'm very disappointed in the board for not taking action this year. I had early discussions about this, and nothing's happened. I'm disappointed with the schools, the teachers, in the past couple of years, because they haven't brought the numbers up. I'm disappointed in the administration, because they haven't done anything that has resulted in improvements. Everybody's at fault, nobody's, nobody's out of the danger zone here. And I, I'm just wanting to raise a flag, saying, what are we going to do different? Scroll down to I-Ready, will you?
Well, I want to address a little bit there, David, real quick. So, when we look at MAP testing, and to be honest, that 50%, I'm going to ask a question, and I mean it legitimately, do you know where that 50% comes from? Just proficient in advanced, right?
That's my understanding.
That's, that's correct, so it's a five-point scale that has four grading targets on it. So if you look at it, what I'm saying with that, and the states also recognize this, which is why they've added that fifth criteria, which is on grade level. So this is about to come obsolete by the end of this year. So when you're looking at this, it won't look the same. So, it's graded one through five. So when you look at proficient in advanced, that's four and five, which if you want to go to an A, B, C, D schedule, that's A and B. A C would be basic. A D, the way it's scored right now, would be below basic, and an F would be below basic. So if you look at that, you're looking at proficient in advanced, so you're looking at the number of kids that scored A and a B. We're not looking at the kid that is truly just average. And we're taking that MAP data, as, as I said before, a snapshot of a singular data point. That's all it is, it's one singular data point. So, when we provided you the data, and you had an opportunity for every single school district in the state, I know you've asked many times, compare us to the top 10. And that's hard to do, like I said, because it's, you, you see like, it's, do you want us against K, the, the top K8 performing district in the state's 190 kids. So is it, is that the equivalent of 18,000 kids? So it's hard to have those data points. What I can tell you is, when you look at the bigger picture, and you take ELA K-12, and you take math K-12, and science K-12, and history K-12. In the state of Missouri, we're in the top 10% of three of the four. The only one we're not is math, which we grew exceptionally well, and you can see that, we're in the top 12% there. So in the state, we're in the top 10%. Are we happy? Do we want to get better? Absolutely, that's what you heard today, we're all committed to getting better. But I think when we look at these pictures, and you look at this data, it's hard to understand if you're not in education, and I'm not meaning that as disrespectful. It's legitimately four categories on a five-point scale. It's, it's unheard of, nobody does that. And again, that's why the state is now saying, we need on-targeting grade level. So when you see those threes that are considered basic right now, I don't know what that cut score is going to be, but that's really where you're going to start looking at those kids that are considered on grade level. It'll probably be a midpoint of that. So it's, we can talk about it, we can look at it, there's going to be a full program evaluation, we'll re-show you every single thing that's been done with your call to action, and what's continuing to go on. You know, I'm getting calls right now, because we're pushing teachers, and we are. And they are exceeding expectations, it is not easy right now. We are meeting with administrators, we are having growth plan meetings with administrators, we are sitting down having SIP. We're sitting down showing individual teacher data compared to other school data, compared to other county data, and there are real discussions going on. So I don't want to make it appear, and I don't know what the intent is here, because we are going to really have this discussion, but when we're saying those things, by all means, share, but I want to make sure we all understand the exact things we're talking about. Because you're right, data could look however you want data to look. So when you say 50%, you're saying 50% are A and Bs. That's ultimately what we're saying, we're not counting Cs, Cs are basics.
Okay, that's fine, I mean, I understand the statement you made. I asked for the, I didn't tell you what I wanted, I wanted to just see what the results are, this is what you gave me.
No, you, you've asked for the top 10, you've asked for the top 10.
Yes, but I'm talking about, I asked for, what are, how do we stack? What are our results from MAP and from I-Ready?
Yeah.
And this is what you gave me, so this is what I'm working on. If you want to give me something different, I'll work off.
Well, I can't, this is what the state did, I'm just explaining how the data evaluates.
This is all I can use.
I, I know, I'm just explaining to make sure we all understand, and we're on the same page. Education's a little different, it doesn't work on profit margins and stuff like that. I just want to make sure that when we say the things, we're making sure we all understand exactly what we're talking about, because it is a little bit different. I mean, when we think about a five-point scale, we're traditional education people, everybody in the room had an A, B, C, D, F. This isn't that, even though it grades the exact same way.
So I, I guess you're, you're telling me to ignore these numbers that?
No, I'm not telling you that at all, let's have the discussion, I'm just saying, when you look at a 50%, understand, that's 50% of As and Bs.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I get that, or else it's 45% or whatever. Let's go down to I-Ready, I-Ready. You know, I, I, and I profess, I, you know, to me, in, in business, if I had people that consistently 50%, they'd be on a pit plan, and then they'd be out the door. So I know it's not the same, and I don't mean to insinuate that's what I'm asking for. I'm just saying that the, the levels that we're, we consistently see have everybody scratching their heads, saying, what the heck is going on? Here we have I-Ready, if you look across the board, I-Ready is 10 to 20% higher. Why is I-Ready 10 to 20% higher than MAP? Is it because we take the test multiple times until we get the score we want? I've heard that, I don't know. The other thing you look at here, with I-Ready, look at how K1, 2, and 3 are. 89, 91, 75, 68, then look at where it drops down when we go to 4th, 5th, 6th, and on down. Why is it that when the kids come into school, they score great, and as they get through multiple grades, every, all the scores consistently drop?
May I, may I answer your questions? Because you asked a few there, and so before you go further, can I address the ones that you asked?
Sure.
Yeah, so you asked, there's a few things, and correct me if I'm wrong, please. With I-Ready, so I-Ready is a different tool than a MAP assessment. We assess K8 I-Ready, so we assess kindergarten, first and second grade, which we do not do in MAP. Kindergarten and first grade historically show less students below grade level, because there is less places for them to go below grade level. So with a kindergartner, you can go pre-kindergarten skills, you can't really go much further than that. And typically, in those K1, 2 grades, we see the absolute most growth with those kiddos. I will tell you, with our focus of science and reading, and our focus on phonics and phonemic awareness, we are seeing amazing gains in a kindergarten, first and second grade right now, so these numbers are legit, absolutely legit, and a true testament of amazing. So these numbers are legit, absolutely legit and a true testament of amazing things that our teachers are doing in classrooms. You also brought up another point about retaking tests to get scores that we want. We have absolutely streamlined that process and the reason why kids retake tests. Kids get red flags or yellow flags on iReady. That happens. They rush. There's things that happen. They are allowed to retake the assessment if that's the case, if it flags them. There are also other reasons. We have kids that score within level every single test they take. And then they take it one bad day on a April, Tuesday in April, and they get two grade levels below. And that's just not characteristic. And they've set a goal for themselves that they're, that they're going to continue to grow and they're disappointed and they want to retake the assessment. That would be a kid that a teacher would submit a form and give a reason as to why they want that test reset for that kid. And we, my department would decide if that would be allowed or not. There's other kids that retake a test and they stayed on grade level. They might've dipped down, but they stayed within that grade level range. That those wouldn't be kids that we'd allow. They, we really have nothing to gain from that. In ELA, on the average for the year, we give almost 36,000 diagnostic assessments. They take it three times a year, fall, winter, spring. We have in ELA, 1.52% of our kids have taken the test above and beyond that three times. So we have greatly reduced that number of kiddos. It's about 550 kids. In math, we take almost 35,000 diagnostics a year. About 439 in addition to that, if kids take retakes for any other reason other than a flag. And that's about 1.2% 1.26% of our kiddos. We have fielded 137 requests in ELA. We've denied 20 of them. We've fielded 100, we've fielded 66 requests in math and we've denied four of them. So we do take that into account every single day and every single testing window.
So, and maybe I can, I like analogies, David. I know you like sports a lot. I know you like baseball. You know, so if you look at a map test, that would be like looking at what a player did in a single game. They go 0 for 5. Are they terrible? No, you need to look at their batting average over the course of the entire year. If you look at ELA, when a kid's in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, they're hitting off a tee. They're going to smash the ball. Then they go in the third grade, they're on machine pitch. They're going to hit 500. Then they're going to go to coach or they're going to go to, you know, kid pitch, they're going to hit like 250. Are they a worse hitter? No, it's just things get harder and more difficult. So that's kind of how you have to look at it. It's different than business. It's education. That, if that's wrong, let me know. But that's kind of how I view it of like, as things get up, they get harder. Map test is one point in time. Just because you performed bad on one day, that doesn't help. iReady, we don't get results for other districts, so we can't compare ourselves to other districts. She also too, when Brian says like, what are you comparing against? Well, did you hit 300 in major leagues? Did you hit 300 in A-ball? It's different. You know, you've got to compare yourself to districts that you're the size of. Does that help?
I understand your statement. I guess what I heard out of all that is that towards confirmation that iReady, you get, you take it multiple times. That's why the scores are higher. That's what I heard.
I'm, I'm sorry if I, if I misinterpreted that. That's not what I said at all.
All right.
iReady is just a better view of what you are as a learner because it's over a longer period of time as opposed to one point in time.
The other piece to iReady is that you take a diagnostic three times a year, but you also have explicit instruction on your path that kids are able to be in there practicing those skills and strategies and deficits that are identified by your iReady diagnostic. So kids take the test and then they're immediately able to go in and practice those skills and strategies in questions that look like the diagnostic test. So they get more practice within that platform. We don't use it as an end measure. We use it as a teaching tool. Whereas a map assessment, we don't look at it. We don't know what the questions look like. It is based on standards, priority standards. We hope, we know we, they throw a few in there every year that aren't. But we don't get that opportunity to teach into how to take that test, what the questions explicitly look like. With iReady, there's just a lot more practice and teaching tool that goes into it. So that's why those, those scores are, are very different.
All right. Fair enough. Difference of how we grade those, I understand. Can we switch to the other multi-tab sheet? There's no other questions or comments.
Can I just ask one question? Did I hear it right? That Desi is again changing the maps. So we're not going to be able to look back on anything with any kind of clarity to, that's cool. I love that. That's awesome.
That's what I've talked about before, when the target's constantly moving.
However, may I speak? However, I will say like, the target does move and we are aware of that. The target has moved for the 20 years that I've been in education. It will continue to move. They are creating these things to be on a bell curve to look at more statistical data versus just looking at like general 50% of students are okay or doing where they should. So they're intending for things to fall on a bell curve. They adjust the cut scores so that they do fall on a bell curve. What's important to us is that we have our local curriculum, that we have our local formative, a formative assessments, our summative assessments that our teachers are writing, that we know that we have a good, valid, reliable tier one. That we're using a valid and reliable calibrated assessment like iReady that's recommended by the state that we're judging our kids on three times a year. So yes, we're taking it more, but it's, it's prescribed more. But also taking that year over year so we can see each kid's progress. My own kids vacillate on that, just kind of depending on what day it is. But overall, I know they're growing. But that's why we prescribe other measures and we look at other indicators other than just the map. The map can give us some good data, but overall, you're right. It changes. They can change a cut score. They can change proficiency scale. They can change how many scales are going to judge us by. And that's why like when we go to the doctor, there's not just one diagnostic test that we base everything off of. And that's why it's important to keep it local also and intimate to what our teachers know about our kids. And to make sure that we can prescribe and diagnose and give quick feedback according to who knows them the best. So yes, it changes. Yes, it's frustrating, but we feel like we know our kids and what they need. And the map test gives us a quick snapshot of that globally and assessing that's not who, the only thing that they are, if that helps.
Okay. The other thing I was going to say, and this is the last one, I swear. When I look at the reading data and the math too, but just speaking about the reading data, the ELA. When we have the whole school or the whole district, this is where we rate for K, K through eight or K-12. That to me, I know that it all depends on what we're asking, what we're trying to look for or whatever, but that, your 12th graders, your 11th graders, your 10th graders are going to make up for, you know, the third and fourth graders who may not be at grade level or maybe the last two years or three years, they've gone downward a little bit. Something like that. So I like to look at each grade level and where they've gone the last four years. But I guess we're not going to be able to do that anymore because Desi's changing it again, right?
Yeah. And it's hard to do that because they change the test.
Well, I mean, right.
Year over year, it's.
But if we're proficient, I'm talking about proficiency numbers.
But even the cut scores change year over year. Like I, and I'm not trying to give excuses. I'm just telling you, even the cut scores change year over year. So like what happens is that Desi will take and they'll say, for instance, what was it Jill? Six, seven, eight years ago, everybody in the state blew away the biology exam. Like just got astronomical numbers. Desi realized it was the way they were grading. It was wrong and they came back and did an adjustment to it. And then the next year, everybody had really bad numbers. And then finally they found the middle ground where they wanted it to be. So there's just a difference in, in Desi kind of, the way assessments work, that's, that's why MAP is so hard. It's really meant to not look at how did your third graders do this year? How did your third graders do last year or?
Fourth graders.
Yeah, it's meant to look at the growth. You got to go up a grade. So how do they progress year over year? And that cohort data is what you're really looking at. We're trying to look at it from how did our third graders do last year to how did our third graders do this year? That's a whole different set of kids.
Right. But I guess what my complaint here is, or what I'm looking for is like, how are we going to address this? And I'm sure you already know, that's why I'm asking. How are we going to address the fact that ever since I've been on the board and even before I was on the board, when I was getting this data and crunching the numbers and looking at, you know, how have they done over the last five years, 10 years? Where, you know, when was our curriculum changed? When was it updated? That's, what are we going to do to, to, I guess, flag or what are we doing to flag? When we see that this third grade class is now struggling in the fourth grade or in the fifth grade?
So a lot of the work that we are currently doing and some of the really good information that we do get from our map assessments is how we do individually on standards. And that is the work that we are focusing on right now in the Wentzville School District is how are our third graders performing on the ELA standards, the mass standards and the science standards that we know are a priority for the state, that those are not changing. And so that is when we look at creating common assessments for standards, when we look at standards based grading, when we look at how information is reported to families and teachers are getting information from kids, we are really digging into those standards. So what we have going on now is Katie and Jill sitting here have just been combing through data and saying like, in Ms. Olson's third grade class, here's all the standards that we hit priority wise in Missouri. And these are all the standards that are assessed on the map test and we work on in iReady. We correlate that with iReady. How is, how are her kids doing on that standard? And how are we going to support that teacher with our curriculum, with our content, with our coaches, with everything we have going on to learn more about that standard and to teach, teach to that standard? And so when you look at that, at the grand scheme of multiple standards and multiple subjects, and I'm just talking about an elementary school teacher. And we say teachers are working hard. They are breaking their backs to do it every single day. And to learn more and to do better, we are always learning more and doing better. And, and having the data about standards and how we do on standards and how we report out on standards and how kids are doing. We think that's where we're going to get the biggest bang for our buck.
Okay. Can we go to the, go to the next tab over to ELA All? This is a stack ranking by school districts. It has enrollment size, number of students tested. You can consistently see that it's not all the students. What you also see is you scroll down that the best performing schools, whether that's 19,000 students, Rockwood, 16,000 Francis Howell or 200 at Avenue City. They, they all, they're all doing better than Wentzville School District. The other thing that I find that's interesting, and I'm not going to go through all these tabs, but there's a consistent element that says that the top performing schools have a much higher percentage recognized as advanced versus proficient. If you scroll down to where Wentzville is, 50 something. Get down there, you can see that those that advance are at a much lower percentage than, than proficient. And this is across the board on almost all these. These are the numbers that we're all measuring by, as I understand it. What is going on? Why is school with only 200 limited resources, like a 200 student, student school or 19,000 student school can do so much better than Wentzville? We've got the best teachers. We've got the best administration. And I'm not being tongue in cheek on this. I truly believe that. I've worked with many of the administration. I've talked with teachers, talked with parents and hear the dedication. Why aren't we doing as well? This is a question I've asked for three years. For three years, I got the same answer. You don't know what you're talking about because you're not in education. You don't know what you're talking about because you don't understand the numbers. I'm tired of hearing that. The school, the, the, the parent is tired of hearing that. It's time for somebody to buck up and say, here's what we're going to do to make it right. We've given you every dollar that you've asked for.
Okay. So when, then you're going to need to vote for the calendar that we're going to bring to you with the release time that allows for professional, that allows for PLC time on a weekly basis.
Yeah.
Because right now that's.
Do away with things that are not essential.
You know, David, every school district has things that are not essential in your version or your mind. Ultimately, you want to know the difference between Francis Howell, Rockwood, Fort Zuma? They all have weekly release time. They all have time to collaborate. They all make the sacrifice. Their parents and the community has to make a decision that we're committed to allowing for professional collaboration. And by doing that, you do it on a weekly basis. When you start allowing release time.
We're just trying to understand each other.
I, I know that.
I know, but you're getting heated, but.
Well, I am because I'm going to protect our people. I mean, we're attacking. I don't feel that way right now.
Okay. But can we just?
No, here. Okay. Let's, okay. Next month, we will be hosting or having a much more in-depth presentation on, I guess, I don't even know the title of it at this time, but there will be a much more significant presentation next month, correct? We have our academic services program evaluation next month that will really just go into the different pieces that we're doing to support, to support this work. Great. Thank you. David, was there any other last, you know, direction or something that you wanted to provide?
Appreciate the time, Julie. I really do. You and I debated this for a while and it got kind of pointed, but my whole point of this was just, we've got to do better as an organization. I'm not pointing out anybody. I'm saying it's all of us. It's, it's as much the minister, the, the board's issue as, as the first year teacher's issue. We've got to figure out instead of just saying we're going to keep working. You tell me what you need and I'll vote for it.
Okay. Then, then I'm going to do that because the other thing is we're going to continue to bring new curriculums like we've talked about when we had 20-year-old curriculums. So what I want to focus on, you want, we want to keep looking back. If you look at where we went last year to this year and the test scores, they went up. Yet we're focused on what has gone on the previous three years instead of celebrating what went right. And that's where I'm struggling. I get what you're saying. I do. This is 24 data that you're looking at specifically. The only data you have right now that you can look at that's comparative because the state hasn't released it is just the MPI scores. And when you look at those MPI scores, they showed massive improvement from 5, 20, or one's like 18% math or whatever it is. I don't have it in front of me. That math, that MPI score is the map performance indicator, index. That again, that's the biggest indicator that the state uses to assess. And I get what you're saying, but I'm telling you, we're in the top 10% in the entire state. Is that good enough? No, I think we all want to continue to get better. But the top 10% are pretty dang good. And we did have success this past year and it shows in the data you were looking at here. This is a year, this is almost two-year-old data now. And I know it's all we have to look at and that's why we gave it to you. We won't have the additional data. When, when is that coming, Jill? January for the entire state. That's the other problem. We don't even get like data that shows us where we're deficient anymore. The state doesn't provide that. So now we spend the time to go out and figure out, here's where all the data points are bad. Either way, you are dead on correct. If you don't think I look at this data and say, we need to get better. That's been the sole focus of everything we've talked about this year. At administrator meetings, administrators are having those discussions. There is a whole different level of accountability right now that I think shows, and I think people are seeing that. At the same time, I do want to protect. We're asking a lot from our teachers. We really truly are. And it's a reshifting of culture and philosophy. It's changing teaching strategies because the curriculum was outdated. I mean, David, I'm going to be honest, a lot of our curriculum wasn't aligned with current state standards. It's hard to do well when your curriculum is not aligned to the state standards that we're testing. I can't get in and tell you why I wasn't here for it. But it's, it's the reality. That's why we keep bringing 70 curriculums a year and rewrites of courses. And we're ramping it up to get them done as fast as we can because we recognize our kids are struggling and they don't have access. Fort Zuma, Francis Howell, they have cycles that they establish that are for curriculum. We didn't have that to the level that we wanted to have it. Katie's team's doing a great job establishing that. We didn't have the same level of instructional coaches that were coming in and helping teachers who were struggling. We didn't have the level of instructional coaches in the intervention time that was being built out. So we're trying hard to get to that. And so I apologize if I'm passionate about it. I'm not trying to be aggressive about it. It's just, I really truly believe we're headed in the right direction. And I don't want to lose people because they don't think we reckon and see that. And that's, that's where the passion comes from, from me. So I, and I'm committed to doing it and I'm committed and I love the fact that we're actually having these discussions.
Brian, I truly appreciate the commitment. This statement that as a leader, that that's, that's where we're going, what we're doing. It's great to hear that. I think, and I hope that everybody that has listened here, the teachers from the administration, I, I'm not trying to single anybody out. It's us. We need to do better. And I'm just saying, next, next month, we're going to get to new results. I wanted to get it out to see where we've been. To highlight what the problems that we've had and for three years, we've had the same issue. Now you've told me that it's going to be great next month and I'm very much looking forward to that. And I'll celebrate that with you. But we've got to make sure that that is not just a blip that, that it's real. And people are tired. They're tired of seeing the kids grow up and not being able to read and write. So I appreciate your, your focus, your effort and your dedication.
Thank you.
All right. I think it is time to move on to.
All right, I think it is time to move on to item 15.6 bid on the, oh, sorry.
I just, it just popped in my head just now. It's something that I've tried to speak with legislation about, wondering what we could do at the district level. If this is something we could do at the district level, seeing the, the numbers and knowing that we do have struggling children. And understanding the development of the child's brain from birth till the age of eight. You can't get a great IQ on a child under the age of eight. But we are testing children under the age of eight to see if they qualify for services. But that's why in third grade, we see that spike in kids that require services. Is there a way that the district could, instead of waiting until third grade, saying up until third grade, kind of like what we do in kindergarten, but push it to third grade? If it's a child who's delayed, they get the services they need. I know we do that with reading intervention, but we, could we do that a little bit more with other areas?
So there's several ways that we look at early intervention. Our CA3T plan addresses that specifically. Are us advocating for additional early childhood classrooms, getting kids in the door sooner? Also has advocated for that. The other thing that we did was we added additional screeners, COGAT, NGAT. We give the COGAT in first grade and the NGAT in third grade as a aptitude test, cognitive ability test. So there's, there's several different avenues that we take. I ready assessment is another one and reading and math. Social emotional screeners and things that we do and that. There's, there's several. I'd be happy to sit down and we could look by grade level at some of those different things. If that's something that you would like to do, Renee.
Yeah, I'm just saying like push it to, because I know the cutoff is kindergarten at this point, you know, if the kid comes in with an I, it's not IEP, but it's pretty much an IEP. But just pushing that to third grade and looking at that and see if that would help. Yeah.
I actually have one follow-up question to kind of like the sentiment of this. Is there any way next, when we bring this back? If we can, if there can be like a list put together of any areas where we can identify where we can trim fat from the teacher's plate? Time that's being, that they can't use for their planning or that they can't use for student time? Just hypothetical, things that we can trim.
Speak for Brian, but I mean, I would think that that has already been in discussion.
I just want to hear the board, I want the board to hear it.
I don't know what that would look like. I mean, that's going to take probably a little bit more time than a month to have something like that. I know we, that we've worked to look at that. I know the NEA sent out some surveys that they share with us that we can see that stuff. You know, it, it really comes down to time. That's what we hear a lot about is time, time, time. Honestly, you might hear a lot of people talk about assessments and that we're over assessing kids. I can tell you, you're going to hear that. A lot of kids, a lot of teachers are going to tell you, we spend way much, way too much time assessing kids. You know, we talk about trimming fat. I, I'm not probably the most popular person because we've cut way back on things like field trips. You know, unfortunately, you take some of these activities that are meant to be fun, that are traditional parts of education. But because the focus is now so heavy on academics and test scores, you're not going to do that as much. You know, like the six flag strip probably isn't going to happen now because it takes time out of class and what's the instructional value of it? So we're going to ask those questions and we're going to be looking at that. So
So this is like an honest question. I'm not, I'm not, I don't know the answer to this, so I'm curious. When we were paper and pencil and textbooks and teachers writing their plans in a packet or whatever. Wasn't it supposed to get easier for them when we switched everything to a computer? Like, like as far as like their time being spent because they're not hand grading every single piece of paperwork?
Yes, but
But we replaced that with something else.
But you're still, if you're an English teacher, you're still grading papers.
Right.
If you're a math teacher and you're doing it the right way, you're still evaluating to see where the mistake was made so you can teach the kid. So yes, it's electronic, but you're still finding out where that mistake was made within the problem.
I'm, I'm talking more so like them when they're doing their, and I don't know what it used to look like. I wasn't a teacher when I went to school. But it seems to me like they were doing things in paper and pencil and it was all manual. And now there's some assistance to it. What have we put in that free space that we opened up for them by switching to computers? What did we put there to make up their time testing?
I, I mean, I'm not testing more requirements. I mean, I can start rattling off and, and I got to be honest, I'm not the right person to talk about. It's been 20 years since I've been in the, in the classroom.
Can I ask, I appreciate the conversation that this be held next month during the presentation unless there's some
Thank you, Brian.
Is that okay? All right. 15.6, the Wentz, we need a motion. Hold on one second. To approve to accept the bid and contract from Hankins Construction in the amount of $829,000 for the Wentzville Administration Center renovations. This was pulled from consent.
Motion.
Second.
All right, discussion.
I had one. Yeah, you know, this is something that I, I, one of the things I received multiple calls and emails on this past week was we have $829,000 to spend on remodeling the admin building. We don't have money to do the schools. And I know that there's the rest of the story and I'm not trying to say that there isn't, but I think it'd be beneficial if we had an explanation for the record of what's going on so we can help rationalize what the numbers mean and why they're being used.
Sure. So the majority of this is sewage repair. So if you've been around last year and if you're here frequently, you see that we operate with four toilets right now. The rest of them are out of order. That's because in 2018, is Josh still here? When was that camera done? 2018, there was a camera that was run through our pipes that showed, showed they were corroded out at that point in time. They've done nothing to get worse. Last year, we had multiple times where there was human feces in the boardroom and everywhere else. And I'm not trying to be disgusting. I'm just telling you that was the reality of what was going on with it. So what has to happen, because this is an old medical building, there are 10, eight or 10 lines underneath this, Josh. Eight lines, eight sewage lines that are under here. And so what has to happen is we have to cap all of those and we have to reroute them all. So we had budgeted within the capital budget already on this one. That probably should have been done in 2018 when the, when the camera work was done to show that these pipes are all corroded out. So they've just been getting worse and worse. So we had 600,000 to replace all that. Well, what we found out is it would cost more if we wanted to keep this bathroom because they'd have to trench through the entire, you can see where it goes. It's the green tape that's on the line. So that's a singular line that would not be there. So this bathroom's got to go away. That bathroom goes through another line all by itself. So that one would have to go away. You'd have to cap those. So those, that's what we're going to do. It's either trench them and fix them so they're usable again. Or it's move stuff out of the way, put ADA, we, we also, there's not a single ADA compliant bathroom in the, in the admin center right now. There's not one. So that we, you know, we were grandfathered in on that, but it's not the best when we use this for our PD center to allow for collaboration. We have guests here who don't have ADA accommodation bathrooms. We have a lactation room that doesn't have water in it. So ultimately the renovations are those. It's just simply mostly replacing the sewer line. The only thing that may look different for people is the idea is to knock that wall down to make it bigger. So when you have professional development in here and cut that sight line in half because that's a deadline, that's a dead sewage line in there as well. Those might be the only two changes. You'll actually physically see everything else is underground with sewer pipe. And that's, that's where it came from. So we had already budgeted this in there. We just intentionally waited because we didn't want to put it out there during the summer bid project because there were so many other things going on and it didn't have a direct impact on students.
Thanks. I, you know, I, I knew that that was going on. I just felt it was important for everybody. Dr. Tim, if you're still here? Okay, so with, with the, the companies that are doing this include a Horner and Hankins. I mean, can, can you tell me, they're consistent contractors for us? Are, are we, are we receiving money from them in any campaign for PAC committee work? Or anything like that in supporting of any of these endeavors? Want to make sure, just as we talked about before about the Google and the Apple, that we're being cognizant and aware of this with these vendors as well.
The PAC committee does not run through the school district. I don't have those records.
Okay, so there's been no conversations.
I, I will say Hankins though, David, I don't, I mean, I haven't been here since we used him as a contractor. So I, I don't know. I mean, Horner is just our architect that was bid it out. That's up for bid this year. So they, they'll bid out again. That's going to come on your plate to do soon. That will have to put that out there. Hankins, I mean, the last companies we've used has been Wright and I don't know who was before that, if any. Who? LCS maybe? Yeah, LCS. So from that standpoint, you know, I don't know. I will tell you oftentimes vendors will put, will add campaign contributions, any number of things. So they can do that as they see fit. That's their choice. What they, what Tim is telling you is those don't run through the school district. So they're not school district business.
All right, I just, and that's, that's good to hear. And I wanted to make sure we weren't talking and directing them to anything. And it sounds like from what I'm hearing that we're not doing that at any level. I appreciate that. Thank you. That's all I had.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I had, I had a question. So in the description, it said that we worked with Horner. So did we pay Horner for like contracting with this?
Yeah, it will be in their, following their master agreement that we already have with Horner for any work that we do with them. Same fee schedule that we use for any project that we currently do with Horner based on our approved master agreement with them.
Okay, I missed the first part of what you said. So we have an agreement with them and so we will have costs associated with this with Horner?
Yes, they did this design and, and construction supervision. Yes, yeah.
Any other discussion? All right, let's take a roll call vote, please, Joni.
Secretary Bezentham?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Way? Director Lewis?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Vice President Walsh?
Aye.
Director Hinky?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, 15.7, we need a motion to approve the proposed tax rates as presented.
Motion.
Any discussion?
Just one item I want to mention that I didn't mention when I spoke for 20 minutes earlier. So the 2.9% that I included in there, that does not include anything that is lost revenue from the senior citizens tax credit. So that money, when we figure our new tax rate, we assume we're receiving that money. That's part of the law. So that 2.9% is actually going to be lower because we know we won't receive some of that due to the senior citizens tax credit freeze. But we are required in our calculations to assume that we are receiving all of that money, even though we won't. And that's the way the, the statute is written on the Senate Bill 190.
So with that comment, real quick, so then we're budgeting, understanding that it's not going to be that.
Correct, yes.
Any other discussion? All right, can we roll call vote, please, Joni?
Secretary Bezentham?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Way? Director Lewis?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Vice President Walsh?
Aye.
Director Hinky?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, 16.1, board action items. Anybody have anything to add?
I guess, sounds like you want to add some kind of something for us to look at teacher workload? You want that to be a board action item or just something you want us to do?
It was for academic services.
I would, like, I would say
If you don't have time to do it before October, clearly, I mean, I know this is, I just sprung it on you on the last minute. I just think it would be good for the board to maybe just get your opinion on areas where we could cut back.
I will tell you what, I have a meeting with the, we have a meeting with the WNEA on Monday, so we'll address that topic and see what suggestions they have. I promise you, they'll have a bunch.
I had
I, I was just going to piggyback on that and say, look, I would like, I would love to hear from teachers in the district, teachers in other districts. You know, what areas do you guys see that, you know, maybe you could bubble up through us that we could then share with administration? Sounds like administration, here's you guys loud and clear. I think everybody said tonight, they recognize everyone's outbreak in their back, putting in more. But then as expected of you and it's appreciated and they recognize that and want to address it. So please share what you guys feel could be beneficial for you guys as well, either with us, with your NEA member or administration. So.
Director Hinky?
I just had two follow-up things. We had talked about this, oh gosh, months ago about naming the road right there. Since reach is coming very soon and that road is not named. So looking into naming that in that process. And the second thing was power lunch. We had brought that up and we had gotten a survey. And we had talked about restructuring that a little bit, just kind of wondering where that's at, kind of some feedback.
That is part of what we're talking about with calendars, day schedule, things like that. When we, when we're going to bring those items, that's something that we are definitely, we've talked about that for two years now. We've been trying to figure out, we've gotten all kinds of research on, and it's more than just power lunch. This is really what I was getting into when we were talking about, how do we schedule release time? Is that something the entire community is going to support? Because it is a big commitment. Part of that would go with, okay, how do we not sacrifice the academic minutes? So what we're spending a lot of time doing right now is evaluating how many minutes of instruction do we have in our current schedule? These proposed schedules that allow for the academic time, the, the collaboration time that I'm talking about. A big part of that is how do we still continue to keep the same number or as many of the minutes as we can? So when we're looking at that power lunch, you know, you're probably looking at something that could be all. Could be probably some. I mean, right now, Jerry, Katie and I have met twice to really pour this over to, to bring some options to talk with the, the NEA and the board about. We're not quite ready to do that, but I would say you'll get something with that sooner rather than later because it's a pretty big shift if we're going to go that way. So, and power lunch will definitely be part of that discussion.
All right, that sounds good. So is that with next month or is that? No? Okay, got it.
Any other board action items that you'd like to discuss? And next, last but not least, board member comments. Anybody have anything? Yes, Director Bezen, Secretary Bezentham.
Um, all right, I just got, and I made some notes because it's been one heck of a start to the school year. I know, at least for me, and I know for a lot. So I want to take a moment to commend all of our teacher staff, admin, students, families for a successful first month of the school year. I know as a teacher of almost 20 years and a parent for the last 12, how difficult it can be to get back in the routine of school. I also understand better than I have ever how much heavy stuff our students have going on in their lives. They or their loved ones are battling illness, cancer, all kinds of things. We have families who have experienced job loss in the last couple of weeks or the last year, families going through divorce, struggling with addiction, parents balancing many jobs or struggling financially, families who are unhoused. Some students are trying their hardest while overcoming learning or processing disorders. Throw in the regular struggles, we all should remember of how hard it is to grow up, to be a middle schooler or a high schooler. Friend drama, crushes, feeling you don't belong, not making a team or club. There's just so much noise in our kids' personal lives and it's heavy for them. There can be conflict that arises among students in a school setting, just like happens in adult workplaces. Every educator I know does their job because they have a passion for their subject matter, for trying to instill that same love of learning in their students and for making school a safe space where our students can grow their knowledge base and figure out what they want to do with their lives. It's also where we teach and yes, in the dreaded group projects, we force them to work together with others without worrying whether they believe the same things, because that's what we have to do when we get to the adult world, which is interact with and work alongside people who think like we do and people who think differently from us. Our students are carrying enough weight from their everyday lives into our buildings with their backpacks, Chromebooks and Stanleys. I am here on the board to equip our teachers and staff, make our schools a safe place for students to learn what they need to know to be successful in their classes and beyond our building doors. And to our WSD family, we've got one month under our belts, great work, and let's keep moving forward, doing our best for our kids. I'd also like to give a personal shout out to the nursing staff in all of our buildings, but especially frontier, middle nurse Alicia and Kate. You guys are amazing. I'd also like to give a personal shout out to the nursing staff in all of our buildings, but especially frontier middle, Nurse Alicia and Kate, you guys are amazing.
All right, does anybody want to follow that? I certainly don't. No.
Motion to adjourn?
Oh, I do have comments, I was, thought somebody else was going to go.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to give my perspective to the board about the state of, well, I guess we care about our district, but society in general. I've had a lot of people contact me, parents, students, community members, staff members. Kind of in, in a place of confusion, but also they're distraught. They're afraid to speak up, they're afraid to, like if they hear something that someone's saying that's abhorrent. They're, they're sitting there in silence because they have a picture in their head, that we all have a picture in our head of what could happen if someone hates you enough for what you said. That'll be ingrained in the, in the minds of all of us for forever. And our kids saw that, a lot of them, or they will, because it's out there. We have to, we have to recognize that we've created or at least allowed this kind of environment to exist. I don't know what we did, I don't know what we can do to fix it, but I think we should think about it. I think that we should think about, like I encourage the administration to look at ways to ensure the kids feel fully accepted and included. It's part of our, our CSEP belonging. Not just, even, even the ones that have opinions that aren't mainstream, aren't acceptable. Because there's been a lot of talk about free speech tonight and I think that students, when they're talking to each other, when they're having opinions or whatever, I think it should be embraced and not policed. I encourage our staff to be mindful of the impression, both good and bad, that you're leaving on the young people's hearts and minds as well as your colleagues. I encourage parents to embolden their children and to teach them that their voices and opinions and beliefs are valid and that they matter. I encourage students to listen to one another and to be better than the example that's been set out for, for you across society. Respect each other's right to have an opinion and always be willing to talk through your differences instead of shouting each other down or slapping labels on people you disagree with. There's always something to learn from one another in the process of the free exchange of ideas. Listen to each other, learn to understand each other and most importantly, fight for and not with each other. And I'll leave you with this quote. When people stop talking, that's when you get violence. That's when civil war happens because you start to think the other side is so evil and they lose their humanity. That was Charlie Kirk.
Any other board comments?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Any second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You have to roll.
Oh shoot, roll call, dang it, okay, roll call.
Secretary Bezentham?
Aye.
No, I don't. Yes, you.
I already said aye, so I'm good.
Secretary Bezentham?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Way? Director Lewis? President Scott? Vice President Walsh? Director Henke?
Aye.
Motion carries.